The order to the airport authority for Camarillo Airport Authority and Oxnard Airport Authority for December ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance. If Director Mulchay could lead us on the pledge, that would be wonderful.
Sure. Everyone, please stand. Find a flag.
To the airport.
Right hand over your heart.
For Camarillo Airport Authority and Oxnard Airport Authority for December ninth, two thousand and twenty-one.
We got some feedback, but.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, and join. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States.
America. To the Republic for which it stands.
Stands one nation under God.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Director Mulchay. And with that, we will have a roll call, please.
Okay, Camarillo Airport Authority Supervisor Long.
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez.
Here.
Mayor Mulchay.
Present.
Vice Mayor Santangelo.
Here.
Public member Bill Thomas has been excused. Michael Hudson.
Present.
Camarillo has a form.
Thank you. And Oxnard's?
Supervisor Long.
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez.
I'm here.
Councilmember Parello. Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Public member Walter Calhoun. Okay, not seeing him. So Eugene Fussell.
Here.
Okay, and Dr. Fussell, assuming Mr. Calvin does not join us this evening, you will serve as the public member of record for tonight's meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. And with that, a gender review. Mr. Friedus, do we have any changes?
Chair, we do not have any changes at this time.
Okay, then we'll move on to, if the directors don't have any changes, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. So for the Camarillos Authority, we have the November first, November tenth of two thousand and twenty-one. Does anyone have a discussion on that or a motion?
Motion to approve, Mike Hudson.
Thank you. And a second by Director Mulchay. With that, a roll call, please.
Chair Long.
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez.
Yes.
Mayor Mulchay.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Santangelo.
Yes.
Michael Hudson.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I will pass that motion's passed. I'll pass it on to Vice Chair Ramirez to run the airport or the Oxnard.
Would you? I'll do it if you want me. Indulge me because I'm, I'm on my phone in the car just between meetings. So I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. Okay, so Oxnard, any discussion on the November first or tenth meeting of two thousand and twenty? If not, a motion to approve.
I'll move approval.
Thank you. And a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. It's been first by Director Lopez, second by Director Ramirez, and a roll call, please.
Supervisor Wong.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ramirez.
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Eugene Fussell.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Sorry, and Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I got a call from Director Parello. He didn't get the link to log on, so I think he's trying to connect to the meeting, so just wanted to give that.
I, I want to thank Ms. Lopez. Thank you very much. You're worth your weight in gold. Thank you for getting me the link so I can get on air. Thank you. I apologize for being late. I couldn't make it work. Sure. Thank you.
No worries. I'm glad she was able to give you this link. So just so in case Director Parello's name is different on his screen, so just to be aware. Thank you for attending. We'll put that in the notes. So next up, we have our public comment period. Is there any public comments?
I see two, two hands raised in our, among our attendees, and we do not have any written comments, so.
Okay, so we can have those, had that raised their hand, speak for, and then give them three minutes?
Of course. And Chair, before we do that, I would like to read out instructions for making public comments.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
If you would like to be added to the public comment queue, please be connected via Zoom. If not already connected and wish to make a public comment, you can find the Zoom link on the last page of the meeting agenda, which can be found at vcairports.org forward slash meeting hyphen calendar. If you, if you wish to make a public comment on agenda item number five, please press the raise hand button now, or if you're calling in today, press star then nine to be added to the speaker queue. Thank you.
Thank you. And go ahead with the public comments then.
Okay, I'm looking to promote Ben D. Benedetto. And trying to figure out why it's not promoting him. Let me see if we can do this. Mr. D. Benedetto, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
All right, cool. First of all, to thank the directors for the opportunity to speak. Going to concentrate my, my three minutes' time here on the flight schools, which is, we all know has been an ongoing problem. We are just, or I am, just starting to track the flight schools with a little more data and also looking into the number of flight schools that participate in our area and other areas. If you did a cursory Google search in the L.A. Basin and the San Fernando Valley, down to Palos Verdes, you'd find about twenty flight schools. If you do the same Google search for Santa Monica, Santa Clarita, Ventura, Camarillo, Oxnard, Santa Barbara, you come up with seventeen flight schools. More research needs to be done because I'm sure there's some duplications. Anyway, my suggestion for the meeting that's coming up next week on the sixteenth with various entities, the airport, the neighborhood councils and all of that, I have some suggestions for the flight schools operating out of Oxnard. Again, we're not trying to close the airport, but we do need to get our arms around this problem with the flight schools. So I would suggest no training on the weekends, no training on the holidays. Limit the number of flight schools that participate daily at the airport. Define the hours for touch and go. Limit the number of revolutions per training session. Charge for the touch and go sessions. And all touch and goes should observe the fly-friendly noise pattern that we are requesting and that the airport has on their noise abatement map. And require the flight schools to remove Oxnard in their, in their commentary on attracting students to fly in the area. There are flight schools that say, come to Ventura and Oxnard and train. It's free. It's easy to do. You don't have any problems here. We can get you on and off and all of that without much problem. I would like that to be removed. I think that we are seeing flight schools from all the way south to Santa Monica, San Diego, and all of the other areas that I mentioned in my cursory search. And I think it would be only fair that when we do have some kind of outline and rules and regulations and requests that are formalized, that those be put on the websites of the flight schools that utilize our area. So again, we're not trying to close the airport, but we do have to solve this problem with flight schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. They have been recorded and I appreciate you being at that meeting as well. Next comment. Can I go? Was there another speaker?
Chair Long, yes. Steve Tannahill will be next, and I'm looking to get him to the point where he can, where he can speak. Steve, do you hear? You are muted.
Apologize.
Okay, I am now unmuted. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. So thank you, Authority members. My comments too are regarding touch and go trainings at Oxnard. I want to start by recognizing the steps that have been taken recently towards solving the problem of planes based throughout L.A. and Ventura counties using the Oxnard Airport and surrounding airspace for their touch and go trainings, and in so doing, overflying the homes, schools, and retail shopping areas. The four neighborhood councils that represent roughly twenty thousand residents that have been working to alleviate this problem have presented eight recommendations to Department of Airport staff that would allow Oxnard to continue to host these touch and go trainings while at the same time acting as a responsible and thoughtful neighbor. Prior to Oxnard reopening on November fifth, the Department of Airports published new noise abatement protocols. These protocols incorporated one of the neighborhood recommendations that planes conducting touch and goes south of the airport operate east of the Edison Canal and north of Woolley Road. This would be a major step forward, and if followed, would mean these planes would no longer operate south of Woolley and would only operate west of the canal when directed to do so by the tower for traffic control reasons. So hopes were high that when the airport reopened, this problem would be significantly mitigated. Oxnard has been reopened for a month, and unfortunately, at this point, those hopes remain largely unrealized. While the situation is better, and I want to acknowledge the fact that some planes are following these new guidelines, it is still the case that a substantial number are not. The neighborhood councils have recorded almost two hundred violations for the month of November, a month that included days when the airport was still closed and when cloud cover prevented touch and goes. We don't know why that is. We suspect a substantial number of pilots remain unaware of the new guidelines. We think moving forward on the other neighborhood recommendations remains essential to solving this problem, particularly recommendation number one, that the new protocols include a reminder to pilots that they have the right to request right traffic for their touch and goes, which would place them north of the airport over undeveloped beaches and fields. And also recommendations two and three, that staff and tower communicate robustly and extensively with principals involved at the flight schools and clubs and pilots using Oxnard in its airspace for touch and go trainings, and letting them know that these new protocols all are in place and they're expected to follow them. I remain hopeful that we are on a path to solving this problem and have Oxnard operate as a valued and respected member of the Oxnard community by ensuring that planes coming here from Santa Monica, Van Nuys, and throughout L.A. and Ventura counties to use Oxnard in its airspace for their touch and goes, planes that in some cases are prohibited from doing touch and goes on weekends at their own airports, follow reasonable noise abatement protocols, including those proposed by the neighborhood councils. Thank you.
Okay, and we have one more attendee with the hand, two, two more. No, Barb Philkins is next. And Barb, if you can hear, please announce yourself, and you have three minutes.
Okay, am I unmuted?
You are not unmuted. You are ready to go.
Okay, um, this is kind of an ad hoc comment. I agree with the previous speaker on the communication, and I had a fairly long conversation this morning with one of the key people at Torrance around New Ways, and she and I kind of made a few suggestions on things that we might want to go ahead and look at for improvement. One thing that Torrance is investigating because they, they kind of canceled their noise gathering equipment because of cost, but signage is an important one, and I don't really recall at Oxnard whether there's clear signage in the ramp area on for, let's say, you know, a pictorial representation of the patterns there when we come in the gate, but it's not necessarily there in the ramp areas, either a reminder to residents or as a reminder to itinerant pilots that are coming through. That was one suggestion that she had. And I guess it's a little bit more difficult in terms of actually having it properly placed and properly viewed in terms of, you know, effectiveness and also presentation. That was just one thing I wanted to mention, but I think there's other things on the outreach that could be done to make this a lot more effective as far as our using utilization of the pattern at Oxnard, both for noise purposes and for safety purposes.
You very much. Appreciate it. And next comment. Davey said there was one more.
I think you're muted.
Sorry, I was holding the spacebar. It didn't work. Um, yeah, I believe that we have everybody who's spoken. We have two in the hands raised, but they have both had a chance to speak, so I believe we're finished.
All right, so everyone could put their hands down, and we'll move on to the next item, which is our new business.
I, excuse me?
Yeah.
I, I didn't have my, my computer unmuted. I, Walter Hagedon, Oxnard Sheriff's Neighborhood Council, and I did have a comment.
Oh, pardon me. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted. It is on, but we don't see you. So if you want to go ahead, your time is starting.
Okay, Authority members, I am Walter Hagedon, Chairman of the Oxnard Sheriff's Neighborhood Council. At your October meeting, I brought up the environmental impact study approved by the North Shores Development to Harbor Boulevard and Fifth Street, just over one mile from the end of runway twenty-five. The EIR, which was commissioned by the city of Oxnard, assured the developer, planning commission in public, that airport traffic would be directed to fly twenty degrees right when leaving the airport to avoid the North Shores development and residents south of Fifth Street. At that meeting, Councilman Parello requested that the airport staff place this matter on the agenda for the November first meeting. At that meeting, Mr. Nafi stated that the EIR was not relevant because the project, quote, "still has not come to fruition," unquote. This is not the case. In two thousand and nineteen, the city of Oxnard reapproved the North Shores project. When can drive by the project site today and see construction activity taking place? Given the value of homes in the area, this project will be built. Now the question is what the developer will do when multiple aircraft are accelerating over their million-dollar homes every couple of minutes? More importantly, what will their million-dollar lawyers do? On another subject, Mr. Nafi also responded to my suggestion that all training flights be stopped until we could resolve this issue. He stated that the airport lacked the authority to ban flights. However, Santa Monica Airport has a mandatory ban on touch and go flights on the weekends and holidays. Many end up at Oxnard. And, and they find their, and ban pilots who do not abide by their noise abatement guidelines, and they also charge schools for touch and go operations. We do none of these things. Why not? Also, these planes, many from airports other than Oxnard, to achieve a sufficient rate of climb, must be at full throttle and running a rich fuel mixture on leaded fuel while flying over our community, causing noise and pollution concerns. Why can other cities dump their problems on Oxnard? The meeting that is scheduled for December sixteenth is very important. I'm not aware of the guest list, but it needs to include people able to address these operational and legal issues. The city of Oxnard is represented by Councilmember Lopez and Councilmember Parello on this authority. We also need Oxnard representative at this meeting. The city gave assurances that overflights would not occur, and that could put the city in legal jeopardy if not dealt with. A person from the city attorney's office familiar with North Shores project could be helpful. It has been over a year since the community got involved in this matter, and hundreds of hours have been spent dealing with this issue. We had hoped that reopening the airport would have seen some changes. They have not. The solution is to allow flight schools doing touch and go operations to request right traffic. It says time to resolve this matter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and I know that staff has received those as well. Okay, next up we have is our new business. First off with the Oxnard Airport Authority. The first one is the approval and award of design service contract for J- Nation. I believe this is Erin Powers.
Good evening, Chairs, Authority members. Thank you for the opportunity for staff to bring this item before you, requesting that your authority recommend the Board of Supervisors take the requested actions. To provide some background, this project was previously bid as a component of the two thousand and twenty-one runway project, but was not awarded due to FAA funding availability. The project, which is for the taxiway connector Alpha through Echo reconstruction, is being repackaged and requires some adjustment, adjustments to the design to allow for phasing of the construction to minimize closures of the runway because the original design contemplated the construction occurring during a full runway closure. We are working to design the project, so any work requiring a runway closure will occur only during the evening hours. To, and that will allow the runway to be open seven days a week. The construction limits for this project begin at the southern edge of the runway, which was just reconstructed, and will occur for each connector taxiway down to taxiway Foxtrot, utilizing also a transition area into Foxtrot. The project is eligible for ninety percent fun, uh, funding from the FAA and includes also a potential Caltrans matching grant of those federal dollars. We are asking for approval in the not-to-exceed amount of three hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars while we finish negotiations due to the FAA's aggressive schedule to get the project out to bid in January and also to be able to be one of the first projects to, to find funding. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, Authority, Oxnard, is there any questions? I see Mike Hudson. Your hand is raised.
Yes, I'm, uh, I understand that there have been some changes in the scope of the project and the fact that the parameters have changed due to the fact that the original project was going to be executed during the runway closure, and now we have, the runway has been reconstructed, and now we have to redesign. But it seems like three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars for a redesign is a considerable sum, and I would understand it if it was three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars worth of construction cost, but three ninety-three for a redesign seems a lot of money to me. So if I could get a little more understanding as to where this almost four hundred thousand dollars was going, I would be more, more supportive.
Sure. So, you know, as you, as you indicated, the original construction didn't, did not include any, any kind of phasing for that construction to take place. So now plant, the plans need to be updated and designed to allow us to be able to keep the runway open seven days a week. That does take a, a certain amount of work and analyzing. Additionally, there are a few other smaller components that require changes to the contractual documents, the technical specifications, and there is a little bit of also review of when you take the original engineering to be stamped by a new engineer, there has to be some review and analysis for concurrence. So those are the items, specifically some of the infield conditions during the runway reconstruction that we discovered. We are building into this project, and that includes the flexibility to change out the soil treatment from just, for example, a line treatment to a line treatment and also a cement treatment where needed. And we also are something that wasn't part of the original design scope had to do with the drainage, the storm drains that connect under each of the connector taxiways, certainly Bravo, Charlie, and Delta, and there may be a portion in Alpha and Echo that we are looking at as well that need to be replaced. The, during the original runway project, there had been no plans to replace those storm drains because the visual inspections had not indicate, didn't allow us to realize that the actual bottoms of the, these drainage structures had disintegrated. And in this case, in order to repave and compact over the existing storm drains, we're going to have to actually replace. So those are a few of the elements. I agree with you. We're talking a lot of money. The, the construction itself, I mean, the project all in, you know, is, is six point six million dollars. It's a lot of money. We're hoping to be responsible stewards. We are still in negotiations, and we are utilizing an independent fee estimate to help us in our negotiations with the consultant to end up at a, at a fair and reasonable price.
Okay, well, thank you. I, changes of such a nature are open to question. I thank you for your explanation. I appreciate your reference.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that question. I too had received that, an email from Bill Thomas asking about that since he wasn't able to be here. Just wanting more detail because it seemed like we had that already incorporated into the last design feature. So thank you for that details. Director Parello.
Thank you, Chair. A couple of questions and a point. Number one, the point I'd like to make, I appreciate Ms. Powers agreeing with the, the speaker and the questioner about the price. This is, in my opinion, outrageous. Or whatever my opinion is worth. But I do know as a fact, I asked specifically, was there going to be a requirement when the project was being under construction? Since this board and this body had decided to do the whole project, shut the entire airport down, if there was going to be any requirement to do any further shutdown to put the taxiway, and I recall, I think it was Ms. Powers responded, no, there would not. Now, I understand people find things out later on and things come up, and I understand change orders. Change orders, they have us by the shorts. We're stuck. But the bottom line, is there anything in, we have in this project for calls errors and omissions? Somebody was supposed to do something that didn't do it? That they have insurance that makes this whole? That's my question. And the price seems, I can only relate to school district. The school district, the real school district, when a school was constructed, architects made a mistake. And then they had to make a change order, but because the architect had the contract, he got sixteen percent of the change order. And the answer I got from staff was architects have a strong lobby in Sacramento. It sounds like engineers got a strong lobby somewhere too. Can I get an answer on?
Aaron, this is Keith. Would you mind if I took, took a shot at this?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, what, and I've, I've been through this for thirty years. What happens is that we scope out a project, and in this case, it was both the runway and adjoining taxiways. And then we're at the mercy of when the bid process comes down is how much money the FAA can help us fund, and that's what happened here is they didn't have the money to do all of the entire project. So that's where we had to break it out, and the breakout was the taxiway portion of that. That, that's common. In doing, doing it for thirty years, we bid out a project, we have the main portion, and then we have add alternates because we never know exactly because we're one of many hundreds, thousands of airports in the country fighting for every dollar. And they, you know, they're trying to dole that out, and so we don't typically get all of the things we want to do, and that's, that's what happened here is they just simply didn't have the funding to do all of the project.
May I ask?
Anything I missed on that?
May I ask a follow-up question, Chair?
Yes, please.
Okay. I appreciate it, and I appreciate your speaking from experience, and I have to trust your experience. I got no reason to doubt it. But what I would like to know is the residents of this city that I represent and Councilmember Lopez represents, we're told the airport was going to be shut down for a period of time, and the pilots that use this airport were told it would be shut down for a period of time. If there is a possibility that it's going to be shut down again for even a limited amount of time, when did we first learn this, and when did we inform the pilots and the community? Is it tonight or when this packet was published?
So Authority member Parello, I do think that maybe a clarification is needed here. The original runway construction project has been on. The original runway construction project has been on time and has been within the published and noticed construction timeline for the project. The elements that were not, what we have before you tonight is essentially almost a brand new project, a brand new construction project. And so when, when we awarded the runway project, we have not had any contract orders that extended time. We actually came in on time, and what we're looking at now is design, is repackaging an element that was not awarded and has to become a separate project.
Does, in a response, does any other board member recall being told that the connectors were going to be done at the same time? That's what I seem to recall. I could be wrong, but I'm wondering if any other board members recall that.
I believe it's on the website as well, Director Perlo, in regards to the process of the airstrip. You know, I can't state anyone's recall or not, but I do believe that the information we've been working on has been out in the public and is on our website. I think what, I think either way, the point I hear from you is that today, going forward, is the airport going to be shut down at any time? Is this going to be communicated to the the pilots, et cetera? What is this process? If we move forward on this project, how are we informing the public? I think is what I'm hearing questioned as well.
That's a good way to phrase it, Chair.
Sure. So we are in the process of working with the FAA to identify the the phasing that we can move forward with, and then we will begin the process of absolutely getting the message out. And we will have time from, you know, this, this contract is the, to be able to go out to bid in January with bids being received potentially, what we're aiming for is the February timeframe. And we would be looking to schedule the work for the summer so that we have plenty of time to make sure that we get the messaging out. And as I, as I tried to emphasize, we are very sensitive to the impacts of closing the airport to our tenants. And so we are working our phasing to have the least amount of impact. And we will be keeping that, the runway will be open seven days a week with the exception of a limited time overnight where tends to be our lowest. It will be the lowest impact to operations because we have fewer operations during that period.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions? Are there any public comments? All right, in hearing then, I believe it's to approve stack recommendation. If I can get a motion from the Oxnard Authority. There are motion to approve this project for the Airport Authority.
I'll move approval.
Thank you, Director Lopez. And a second?
A seconded.
Thank you, Supervisor Ramirez. And a roll call, please.
Go ahead.
Supervisor Wong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perlo?
Bert, you're on mute.
Beg your pardon? No.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Eugene Fussell?
Yes.
That motion passes four to one.
Thank you very much. Next item is the approval of the appointment for the public member and alternate public member for the Airport Authority. Passes over to Mr. Friedus.
Yes, so we have an application that we're asking for the committee to approve that application, and we would then put out an announcement for the vacancy with the expected review by the committee during the January meeting.
Okay, I have a question in regards to this. Are we having? Sorry, my headache is horrible. Do we have a vacancy for this position?
No, as I recall, this was a discussion with the Oxnard Authority to appoint a new public member. And this was the process we would follow to do that. First is development and approval of the application, submit all of the applications, and then the committee would do that vote. And maybe Dave from our office can provide additional background history on this?
To what extent, Mr. Director?
The history of this coming to vote.
Maybe I, let me direct my question a little bit more. It'll help. So with our bylaws, remember, Authority members, we reviewed the bylaws. And with that approval, there was an assumption by some that the new bylaws were approved in September 2019. And therefore, the term of those on the committee from that point would fold their two or three years, whatever that was, which is March 2022 or March 2023. So wanted to know if that's valid? Or if we have not elected a new authority member for the community, and therefore, we need to start this process? I don't know how, where other Authority members are of this item, and wanted to make sure we have that conversation in public.
It's my understanding that the public members are duly impaneled, but in a holdover situation. So we would, we would seek to add, replace the members and thus begin their new terms.
And so then when would their new terms start, whoever we elect?
Following the election, I believe, which would be scheduled in early 2022.
Okay, so early 2022. I see two questions. I'm going to start with Councilmember Perlo.
Yes, first off, it's mentioned that there is an application. Has this been circulated for people to apply? What are the requirements to apply?
Point of clarity.
Is there opening date? Has the open application date passed by chance? I was unaware that this was transpiring.
No, yeah, tonight was to look at the attachment application and have these committees approve the application. And then from that point, we would move forward to publicize that and get it out that there was vacancies and or interest.
The only issue that I'm aware of, there was a question about a member of the public serving on the Oxnard Airport Authority that did not reside in Oxnard. And apparently, my understanding again was staff said the bylaws had no requirements. The person had to live in Oxnard. Has anything there changed?
Not understanding, no changes with that understanding.
And I hope before we go further, the question that the council, that the Chair Supervisor Long asked about the dates and the times, if there was a bylaw approval in the year 2023? And that was a little fuzzy to me with the answer and the response she got. Maybe she could explain it to me better.
Well, let me take a first stab at that. First of all, my understanding is that the Oxnard Authority does not have a limit for term as the Camarillo Authority does. So the Oxnard does not. Again, it was presented that there was discussions with the Oxnard Authority previous months ago that were talking about wanting to make appointment changes to the public member. That's why this was kind of put on the agenda. Separate issue for Camarillo, they do have term limits. Three two-year term limits, and the incumbents have exceeded that. Even though there was a bylaw change, that doesn't override those limitations as guided by us with County Council, so.
As a follow up, sir?
Yes.
If there is no limitations, then the current member of the public could apply?
That is my understanding for the Oxnard.
Yes, just simply for the Oxnard?
Yes.
And the current alternate could apply also?
That is my understanding, yes.
Thank you.
And as Director Ramirez or Supervisor Ramirez?
Thank you. I, I, I think that the membership should be consistent, in my opinion. I would like to suggest a change. I also like to suggest a change that anyone who serves on the Oxnard Airport Authority as a public member be a resident of Oxnard. I just think that's right. Is that the same for the Camarillo Authority public member? Does that person have to reside in Camarillo?
Again, looking through both the bylaws and the authority agreement, there is nothing for either one that requires a residency that we've seen.
Well, I, to me, it just strikes me as not good to have any, to not have local residents on these authorities to express their concerns of the residents. And I can, I could foresee a situation where all of them, a public member would be from entirely outside the area and potentially not have the interests of the residents, the local folks in mind. So I'd like to see if we could make that change. I don't like to see what my colleagues think about that. Also, I do think we should have term limits.
And if I, I believe Tom Temple is on, I believe that would, to do that, we would have to do a bylaw change. Is that correct?
Sure.
Yes, that is correct. And we would also have to look and see in each of these questions whether the Joint Powers Authority either, you know, precludes it or whether doing it would otherwise violate the JPA.
And that goes for the Camarillo one as well.
I'd appreciate that information and like to see what, again, what everybody else thinks, but also I'd really be interested in seeing that happen in the best interest of the airport and the residents around each of the airports.
Okay, and Director Millsay?
I just want to add this point of clarification. It's my understanding that the, both the at-large member and the alternate are appointed at the discretion of the other four members of the authority. In this case, it would be the two supervisors and the two city representatives. As such, although we may not have anything stipulated in our bylaws, we have, we have the discretion to give whatever kind of weight we want to our deliberation, our discussion, our selection. So if we want to weigh that factor that someone be a resident of one of our cities, then I think we have that within our discretion to add as a weight in our discussion and selections, so.
And I don't see, I don't hear Mr. Temple saying no. So I think you brought up a very valid point. Director Susan Santangelo?
I just wanted to tag on that I, I would not want to see the bylaws changed. We have a lot of people in Camarillo that live outside city limits yet are still affected by the airport. So I would rather it be to our discretion. That's just my thought.
Good point.
I would just chime in as I'm not excluding people who live in that area. But I can foresee a situation where somebody entirely out of the area. I know we all have, you know, unincorporated Oxnard, unincorporated Camarillo. I wouldn't have a problem with that, but I just potentially can see someone like from Los Angeles or Santa Monica area or someone else, some other place having influence and voting over our airports, and I don't think that's good.
Right, and making sure that it is in Aventura County especially. Is there, I see three hands, but you've all spoken. So do you want to speak again? Just a clarification. All right, so then the item today is to approve an application so that it would come out. The timing of it would be members of the public will have until Friday first 2021 at 11:59 to submit the applications. And that the application will be distributed to the members of the Airport Authority for review during the week of January 3rd. And that it would be agendized on January 13th to provide any applicants that we receive, and it could be our current public person and member and our alternate public member. Am I correct, Mr. Friedus?
Only at this point for Oxnard. That's not the case for Camarillo, yes.
Right, I just, good clarification. This is only for Oxnard.
Yes.
Director Perlo?
Thank you. Is there, is there a requirement that the member of the public have some connection with the airport? I know that we have members of, I can only speak for myself, that serve on the Airport Authority that don't know anything about airplanes, other than if they go for a ride in one, they want to come back and land safely in one. That's my connection with the airport, and it's become a very interesting thing. But the members of the public, Camarillo and Oxnard, have brought a lot to the table. Is there a requirement that whoever's going to serve as a member of the public knows something about something that's important to the airport? Because I can tell you as one member of this board, an elected position, I've been relied on, I can, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Calhoun, Mr. Fussell, I've relied on their input, Mr. Thomas, because they were talking about things that I knew nothing about, and they shed a light, basically turned the light switch on so you could understand what was being talked about by the staff. So that's my question. Is there any requirement that any member of the public that's going to apply have some connection or some understanding about airplanes other than watching them go by?
At this point, there is nothing in the bylaws nor JPA that talks specifically about background or experience for the applicants or the members.
So that would go as what Director Millsay was saying, that is at our discretion.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I agree with Ms. Perlo. I think unless there's some prohibition to change in the bylaws, I think the person from Oxnard and the person from Camarillo should be pilots because they can give a different perspective. And I would hate to see the public member, as Ms. Perlo pointed out, knowing nothing about airplanes. I think it's very important that you have a person at least be a pilot. And if it requires a bylaws change, so be it.
Okay, well, we can bring the bylaws back at another meeting. But, and today we can move forward with the approval of the application, if so willing of the authority. And since Director Ramirez is back here, do you want to take this back on, or do you want me to continue?
Would you, would you go ahead? Since we're in the middle, I don't like to change horses, Mr.
That's fine. I'm trying to be as courteous as possible.
Thank you very much.
So with that, is there a motion to approve this item? From the Oxnard, so move it in a second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been first by Director Ramirez, second by Director Lopez, and a roll call, please.
Supervisor Wong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perlo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Eugene Fussell?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously?
Thank you very much, and great questions. I hope that this goes on the airport website also and that everyone tells their friends. So next item is our third resolution for authorizing remote teleconference meeting. We've had this conveyor board before. So if there's no further discussion, it's a hybrid, or not a hybrid, I'm sorry, it just gives us authorization to do Zoom meetings for another 30 days. Keith, do you have any comments?
I do not at this point. No, no changes at this point, other than I'm not 100% sure that we'll meet the date. Anna, was this the item that we might require another interim before the next meeting?
A special meeting.
Yes, if it is approved this evening, a special meeting will be required prior to the Yes, if it is approved this evening, a special meeting will be required prior to the January thirteenth meeting.
Okay, then if this meeting is not, if this meeting is not approved, then we would go back to a hybrid or in-person meeting. Is that correct or in-person only?
It would be, oh, sorry. It would be in-person. The hybrid meeting comes with some requirements of its own. One of them is the authority members participating that choose to participate over Zoom has to allow members of the public to join them where they are.
Okay, and so if we did a hybrid right now through this, you wouldn't have to put your personal address on there. Okay, I get it. Does anyone else have any questions? If not, motion to approve.
I will move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
In a second. It has been first by Director Ramirez and second by Director Perallo. Roll call please.
Supervisor Long?
No.
Vice Chair Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Eugene Fussell? Dr. Fussell, I I believe that is a yes. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
That was a yes, yes.
Thank you. That motion passes four to one.
Thank you so much. And now we will move on to the Camarillo Airport Authority. This is the approval of the application for the appointment of the public member and the alternate member. And Keith or Friedus or Tom Temple, if you could review what the difference is for the Camarillo one. You stated for there was something different than the Camarillo one from the Oxnard.
Yeah, I'll take I'll take the first shot at. The difference specifically is that the Camarillo Authority does have term limits specifically spelled out, three two-year terms for the public member and the alternate public member. So the the incumbents currently have exceeded that at this point, which forces a new vote and and selection for these both these positions. So similar thing, we thought it appropriate that we craft what you have and attached is an application. And we would follow the same process as we're doing for the Oxnard Authority. Announce it if approved in this form, and they have the same timeline and everything else.
Does anyone have any questions on this? None? Okay, motion to approve. I'm struggling here. Okay, in a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. A roll call please.
Chair Long?
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Mulchay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Santangelo?
Yes.
Michael Hudson?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Wonderful. And this is the next item is the Resolution Three for the Remote Conferencing. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll move the approval.
I'll second.
Director Santangelo is the first and the second is Director Millsay. Roll call please.
Chair Long?
No.
Supervisor Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Mulchay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Santangelo?
Yes.
Michael Hudson?
Yes.
That motion passes four to one.
Thank you so much. Moving it on to Director's Report.
I will quickly run through. I have four items I want to first recognize airport staff on my first week with the reopening of the Oxnard runway on November twelfth. Nice ribbon cutting. Have had about seventy-five stakeholders, interested parties that attended. Again, nice ribbon cutting. Here's some pictures as well. Appreciate everybody. And, you know, fourteen million dollar project, one of the largest for the airports department and a brand-new runway that, you know, typically in this environment would last at least forty years. So just want to recognize again, Aaron Powers, leading the project for the airports department. About a two and a half years from design to through construction and and all the rest of of the airport staff. Fabulous job. Any questions or thoughts, comments from the authority members?
I would I would personally just say thank you so much. I'm so glad we have a ribbon cutting just to celebrating the hard work of staff and the subcontractors and the directors and everybody just coming together. That was huge. I don't think what's every maybe thirty-five years. So it was a big accomplishment and just really great, great event. So thank you. And and for the speakers, Director Ramirez, Supervisor Ramirez spoke and John Zerkoza and I believe Mike Powers. So I just really appreciate everyone's efforts. Director Peralo?
I'd like to thank the individuals that brought in the antique planes, works of art, and making the arrangements, everybody making the arrangements. Thank you.
Yeah, and Walter Calhoun flew in his plane too. It was there. It was cool. Anyone else? All right, keep going, Keith.
Second item that I know is a is a hot topic, it was as I I hit my thirtieth day on the job. The joint powers agreement issue. What I'd like to just say is that I've met a couple of times now with the city manager Greg Ramirez for Camarillo. And next week have a a meeting set with the mayor, Sean Mulchay. And again, continuing to dialogue to to work through some of the issues and and positions, whatever you want to call it, between the the county and the city. And I I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get through that. So not much more to add at this point, but dialogue has been started and it looks favorable from from my position.
Very good to hear.
Any comments or questions about that? If not, next top priority is the private hangar leases, both Oxnard and Camarillo. I've had discussions, one with the president of the Oxnard-Camarillo Hangar Tenants Association last week, multiple discussions with our county council. And I'm happy to say that we we've re-engaged this issue. We're working on some new language that we think both parties can agree to. And my personal goal, quite frankly, is to have this issue through this these committees and AAC and up to the board within sixty days. I think we're that close. So that's my personal goal is to make that happen, even even with the holidays, just make this happen and get it off everybody's plate. Any other questions, thoughts? Lastly, is the speakers have stole some of our thunder. We do have a noise forum set for next week at Oxnard. It's a collective of about fifteen people. We've got airport staff, we've got air traffic control, the manager and another air traffic controller. We've got some of the flight school owners and chief pilots. And then, of course, community members from Oxnard Shores, Channel Island and Villa Maria. So leadership from those folks. And basically, it is to help airport understand exactly what the issues and come up with some solutions that we can implement, both short-term and long-term. You know, many of those things have already been, staff has been working on over the last year, year and a half. But it's putting some teeth to it, and we've got some good ideas, not only with the communities offering, but we've got some ideas from pilot groups, air traffic control, and then the airport staff are bringing some new ideas to the to the table. So in the end, we'll have a a list, to-do list. Most of that will fall on the airport. But it is a partnership, so everybody will have a piece of that. But that is the the goal by the end of the meeting. And it won't be the last meeting. We'll have future discussions for sure and updates. But those are the top four things I'm working on. That's all I have for the Director's Report.
I see that there's a question from Director Millsay.
Didn't have a question or comment. I I just wanted, I noticed that there was a member of the public who raised his hand. And I thought I think he wanted to make a public comment on this item.
Oh, thank you. And Director Peralo?
Yes, I would like to know if whatever this meeting is taking place, if either council member, Oxnard City Council Member Lopez or myself could be invited to attend that meeting.
Our mistake, because I know that you have been invited and maybe we have the wrong email address. Dave, correct me if that.
It, Councilmember Peralo is on the list, so I will double-check the email and and make sure that the proper one is is included.
So the answer is is yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And check also because he didn't have the email for this meeting as well. Thank you. And then we had a public comment, three minutes. Dave, if you can bring that person in or if they're already in.
See how it goes. Scott Bear, you may unmute yourself and announce, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, all. I just wanted to follow up on Director Friedus's comments about the private hangar lease. He's been terrific so far in meeting with me to discuss the issues. He's been amenable to the issues we've we've raised. He's followed up with phone calls. He's asked Mr. Temple to follow up with our lawyer, and that's already happened. So it's just great to see that we're making progress and to hear that we're looking at potentially a sixty-day timeline is even better. So I wanted to thank Mr. Friedus for that and his staff for the work that they're doing behind the scenes to to get this done. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much for those comments, Scott. I really do appreciate that. Thank you. And with that, we will move on to reports. So that's the only public comment. Thank you. So are there any questions on the reports that have been submitted? I think Sean, your hand was up from the previous item. If there's none.
That was previous, sorry.
No, you're good. I just want to make sure I don't miss anything. If that's it, then we have correspondence. There's no motion to it, but is there any questions or any public comments on that? Hearing none, is there any authority comments? Okay, Director Millsay?
Just one this, and this is probably directed at staff or I'm just following up. We had, I'm looking for an update on the surveillance system issues of both Oxnard and Camarillo. This is like my annual question update. Last we talked, the the surveillance system in Oxnard was completely defunct. And then the one at Camarillo wasn't recording or wasn't backing up. And then we had several cameras down. I was wondering what the update is on that or what progress has been done.
Mayor Mulchay, I can take that. Thank you. We we did, we have identified a vendor, received one quote. And it was for, you know, a complete redesign of the system. The entire backbone is antiquated. It was it was designed and installed back when the iPhone one was was just a twinkle. So the the good news is that a great system is is fully achievable and it would allow a lot of plug-and-play and a lot of future-proofing features to it. It would be amazing. The the challenge when we, when I brought that to the former director for a decision is that we had about a third of the money needed to install that at both airports. And and we had an amount of money to to put at you know, installing at least some backbone and maybe put put a system at one of the airports. And the decision was made to table it until such time as we could get complete funding for both airports before moving forward at all. So that's that's where it goes. We've got, we've got a good design for a system. We've got a good vendor in line. It just requires the funding. And so I would bring this to the to the new director. And 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 we'll we'll move forward with a plan of action with with that coming up on a new budget season. So we could be hopeful for for getting some piece of that, the backbone or all of it funded and installed. I'm told that once the funding's in place, we could get something start to finish in, you know, in a ninety-day timeframe. So that's that's the report for that, and I appreciate the opportunity to share.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, thank you for that. And then Mike Hudson, Director Hudson?
Yeah, is that for Mike Hudson?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm trying to ask the question curiosity. We have had a note of at the Camarillo Airport for several months now about the runway closure from seven thirty AM local time to eight AM local time. And I'm wondering what the what the background is on that and what it what it, is this going to carry forward for some time? What what are we doing on this runway closure? Is this inspection or need for repair? What what are we doing here?
I can take that as well. Mr. Hudson, the 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 reason for the closure is it's once a week now. Through the through the past summer, it had been a nightly shutdown of the runway for an enhanced inspection of the pavements. And so working with our engineers, we've we've elected to recognize that the risk that we were addressing is lower than once presumed. And so we do a heightened inspection, thorough inspection of the runway, especially along the center line at Camarillo, once a week and document that so to make sure that we can we can see any progression of of any deterioration of the pavements. And so that's that's what we're doing is we're we're making sure that we're tracking the condition of that pavement much much closer than a normal a normal runway inspection, drive-by inspection would 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 obtain. So that's our business.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that information. I appreciate it.
Thank you, and Director Peralo.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Number one, I would like to thank the staff for trimming and putting into higher visibility to the stop sign at Freedom Park Drive at Pleasant Valley. It had been covered up by shrubbery and and did an excellent job of cleaning it up. I would also like to thank Mr. Hudson. I believe when I mentioned the pilots, I didn't mention him that sit on these boards. He has brought a lot, all of the pilots that serve on these boards have brought a lot to the table. And I hope everyone has a happy holiday season.
Um, you you just reminded me something, Bert. In regards to the who can apply for the Camarillo, I just had a question. Could the private, the public member now put an application in for the alternate member? An alternate member now can put a application in for the public. Is that correct?
I don't know if county council is on, but that was my understanding is because it's a different position that 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 would be okay. I don't know if Tom had a different take on that.
That's what I recall, and I forgot to mention it. So I'm mentioning it now. So, Mike, I just want to make sure you knew that as well. Okay, any other authority member comments? Seems like it's going really well. With that, then I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you for dealing with me. And our next meeting will be January thirteenth at six thirty, unless we need a special meeting to extend the thirty days of the meetings. All right. And happy holidays, everybody.
Holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Better, Kelly. Happy holidays, everyone.
Feel better.
Bye.
Have fun, everybody. Bye-bye.
Be safe.